Good evening, everyone. We seem to be missing some people. Mr. Fulbright is under the weather, um, as I- I think Ms. Parker will be here late. I don't know about others, but hopefully they'll come. We- it's not a voting meeting, but hopefully, uh, we can get as much done as possible. You know me, I like to start on time, so here we go. I don't think we need Ro call. So you're- you're- you're, uh, calling Ro, uh, on your computer, right? All right, I'm gonna... I had- let me get my computer. Wow, really? Yeah, excuse me, I- Getting my act together here. Um, I guess the first item of business is finance?
Um, Ms. Kinzer, I was actually gonna say before I started on the budget amendments, as soon as I present finance, I was gonna go back to the Capitol Projects Meeting if that's okay with y'all. We've already talked to Lisa about it, and, um, it's getting crazy over there a little bit already.
I bet it is.
It would be actually pretty fun to do that, yeah. We did the small funds first, so they've already presented, like, you know, two oh seven, one thirty-one, two sixty-one. Um, all the little funds were already presented. We just did adequate facilities before I left, so I think now one twenty-seven was presenting. But I think they were about to get to one eighty-nine and all of those where it was gonna... Like Eric and the sheriff were probably gonna be up there fighting for the money pretty soon. Um, either way, we have, of course, our monthly budget amendments. Um, a lot of this stuff is title and, uh, federal funds. Uh, and the rest of them are, eh, the one-on-one ones are really operational items. Um, if you guys have any con- donations are in here as well. If you guys have any questions, I can answer them. If you guys want me to go over any budget amendment specifically, I can do that. The one item I did wanna discuss, and I actually didn't have a chance to attach the attachments, 'cause I was supposed to do that before I came and met with you all today. But there's four budget amendments that we are going to be getting, um, hopefully from summer camps. That was actually done late last night and stuff, and, um, we sh- we just wanted the item number three one two, three point one point two. We would like for that to not be part of consent.
No, go- I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
Say it again.
Item number three point one point two. We will have four budget amendments for summer camps.
Okay.
Um, Scott's office is in the process of submitting, and it's already submitted as of li- last night to the state. The state has not approved these grants. Um, as soon as the state approves it, we just wanted the board to not be surprised at the actual voting session that there will be four new budget amendments that we would like a permission to add to the actual voting agenda versus not having them at this agenda just because they're summer camps.
They just won't be on consent.
They just- we don't want that item to be on consent, and as soon as, uh, the state approves it, we'll have the budget amendments, uh, presented to y'all.
Okay, any- is there any questions or, uh, comments about the budget amendments?
And like I said earlier, a lot of them are title and, um, federal f- federal funds, and then we have donations and just revenue payment ones. There's- I don't think there's any in here for fund balance.
Okay, then we'll put all of them on consent and move on.
Next on the agenda, you will see the ESSER budget update. That is the update that was given to you last Thursday.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Palakovic is here and more than willing to give you that update again. Uh, however, I don't think that should be necessary. Um, and basically, just as a- as a caveat, I know we had a lot of discussions after it. The budget amendments, or the- yes, the budget amendments that put those budgets into our revenue lines will look like what we talked about last Thursday. Um, up until ne- or last Thursday, yes. Up until next Thursday, when we talk about what we're gonna do with those remaining funds. So again, please don't put those on consent, but, uh, because that- that's a work in progress. A- as you know, we had- we had some- some questions about where we were going with those that we'll answer next Thursday, if that makes any kind of sense.
So that'll be new business?
Correct.
All right. So, uh, and that would- all of those budget amendments then, uh, stay as new business?
Ms. Shirley, that's gonna be number twenty-seven, thirty, and thirty-one. They'll be on new business still. Okay, is there anything else? Our- our- our monthly reports are out there. I know we discussed a lot of what our revenues are looking like, what our fund balance is looking like, what our sales ta- I know we discussed a lot of this on Thursday. Um, if you all have any more, you know, questions, we're gonna be coming back, of course, on the twenty-eighth. Um, Lisa's office and we met for about, what, three hours earlier today, and, um, went over the whole classified document. So we're feeling good, and, um, we're finishing out the teacher document now for the study, and that should be- we should- we're pretty much on track to bring you guys the reviewed everything full budget on the twenty-eighth.
Okay, good. Are there- if there any other questions or anything for her, then she needs to go to the commission meeting, correct? Okay, yes.
Actually, this is for Lisa.
I'm just sho- I'm- I apologize for being late traffic got me on this one. Um, so what you're saying is the- the ESSER spending, we'll be discussing that at the next... Just- okay, that's fine, and you'll have some options like we talked about.
Yes, we- we just had- we had that bonus money, we had the, um, kiosk money that we're coming up with alternate plans, and we'll make that decision on Thursday.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good luck. Um, next is, uh, is what? Is bid number twenty-two zero five three, interactive HD screen packages discussion? No?
This is a special education purchase. Um, Leslie Crawford is, uh, behind me. I'm quite certain I did not see her when I came in, but, uh, she's always there. Um, and thank God for that. Um, but, uh, these are the interactive screens. Last year, if you'll remember, uh, the Special Education Department bought four thirteen schools, uh, interactive screens. This is finishing up that- that purchase with the rest of the schools.
Any questions or discussion? So can we put that on consent? Turn the page here. Next is, uh, the Green Power car kit.
I would like to introduce to you all our new, uh, Supervisor of Career and Technical Education. Uh, Ms. Amy Roberts is somewhere behind me. Ms. Amy, if you will, uh, come on up here for a minute, please. Um, I'll do formal introductions again at the board meeting. Um, I wish I had a board of five. We have a larger board.
Yeah.
But, uh, she'll be happy to answer any questions you have on those two purchases.
Other questions? And welcome aboard. Thank you. Uh... Do you have questions? Here she is. Good job. Great first, I- and I assume that would be putting on consent both of those, uh, bids, for- all right? All right, next is ACT prep, federal programs. Any comments about that? Is that consent, guys? All right, moving on along. Um, I don't think Eric was gonna be here, but David's here in case we have questions. So we're in, uh, operations here, so first is bid on the boiler pump replacement. Correct? Any questions about that? I have to wake y'all up here. No questions? Consent? What about the next one, ceiling tile replacement? Consent. Um, Battle Creek mascot and colors discussion. There was no attachment, so I assume... Oh, there is now? Okay. So, Mr. Moore?
Just, uh, so I'm trying to recall from the policy. I mean, there- can you remind- there's a couple of ways. Either the board can decide this, or we had it in policy that we could put together a panel that would- that looked at those things. Um, I'm assuming we're leaning more towards the- the first one, that just the board decides this and move on? Does anybody know?
That- that is correct. We- whatever the board's will is regarding this, we had mockups made of the- of the uniforms. It's- it's in a PDF version, so it doesn't look as- as crisp, but it is- it is a navy and a white and silver color. And of course, it is the board's will if it's gonna be Battle Creek High School Grizzlies, uh, or if you all wanna change it to another name, what have you. It- it is you got- it is your- your call on that. But we wanted to kinda allow you to see what it would look like, um, and give you all that, uh, in front of you to kinda decide the- the route you wanna take.
Who- who did the logo?
You talking about the- the bear?
Mhm, who designed it?
Honestly, I'm not sure, but I'm not privy to that. I don't- I don't know. Maybe Jack may know who did the logo, I'm not sure.
I mean, it looks like just a- a carryover of the- the bears that are at the middle school logo, just some different color schemes.
Absolutely. I mean, we took the- the Cubs and the Bears a- and kind of just made it a little meaner.
Yeah. Yeah, I was gonna say, I- I like the upgrade of it.
It does have a little bit more of a ferocious bite.
Right.
It's in the teeth area where the graphic is updated, so...
These are gonna be some great quotes for later. I mean, I'll- I'll just say, I think it- I think it fits with what's already there on the campus. It looks good, so you guys- I think you guys have done an all right job. And I definitely don't have any better suggestions, so I- I'm happy with it as it is.
I- I- I personally think it's fine. I think, you know, we need to, as a board, just move forward, and I'm- I'm happy to put it on consent. What about y'all? Okay, good. All right, next is, uh, Cox Athletic Fields. I think we were looking into that, right? Who's gonna talk about that? Chris? Okay, thanks. I just wondered if a student had it, did it, but that's just me.
So- so in your, um, packet, of course, um, to talk about EA Cox, um, as you all know that the City of Columbia, we have an MOU arrangement with the City of Columbia for them to manage and maintain all of our athletic facilities at EA Cox. We- we- we are not responsible for those facilities, and it was based on the agreement that happened several years ago, uh, regarding the purchase of land and, of course, a fire, uh, fire station, et cetera. However, there has been some concern regarding those standards. Now, the City of Columbia, if you look at the MOU, says the City of Columbia standards. That doesn't mean it's necessarily our standards. And so, we just put it on here for a topic of discussion, to kinda throw around a little bit. We don't have, you know, really anything specific. We just know that there are challenges that are- that exist with it currently. Uh, and the current MOU that has been submitted has not been signed, uh, that the City of Columbia submitted to us, the district, it has not been signed. Just FYI on that as well.
Okay, I'll get to that one in a minute. I mean, I- I just wanted to say, I mean, I have, over the last few weeks, had quite a few parents reach out that they just had some concerns with the- with the state of the fields. And I know one of the- as when we first agreed to do this, one of the things we talked about was we were hopeful that this would mean we would have some better playing fields. I know there had been comments before this went into place that they were just- just super muddy fields. Um, I think I recall there were, uh, several games that had to be canceled quite often because of rainy weather, just not good field play. Um, and I don't know what the answer is. I just- I- I think it's something we probably ought to continue to explore as a board and make sure that we're doing right by the- the property, and make sure that we do have, um, it up to our standards, even though it's what the MOU says it would be theirs. I mean, I'm- Mr. Pointer, do you have any recommendations or suggestions on what you think? How we can reconcile this? Again, I don't- my intention wasn't to, you know, call off the city on this. My intention is just we've got parents concerned, and I think we need to make sure that our kids can play on a good field.
And I will say, since coming on board, I have also received multiple, um, not really complaints, just concerned parents or- or concerned, um, uh, constituents and- and- and community members. Um, finding out that the MOU is not signed, is this something that you want me to, uh, work with Jake on and kind of look at? Again, not calling the City of Columbia to task, but I don't know why we don't have a signed MOU. I'm...
When I say MOU, I'm talking about they just recently sent an MOU, the- the updated, you know, like you renewal, I guess you would say, of the MOU. We've had past signed MOUs. So, I- in- in talking with- in talking with Mr. Pearman, uh, earlier today, uh, one of the- the- the goals that we set forth was to sit down with the City of Columbia to see if they could meet our or match our standards. And if they did not, it would be us coming back to the board to- to come up with some sort of plan or strategy in order to take those fields back, and only the athletic fields portion only. We would still have an MOU agreement with them that will allow them to- to have city league games of football, or softball, or baseball, whatever games they will wanna house. But then we would take back sole responsibility of those, and we would be maintaining them and taking care of them like we do all the facilities across the district.
I mean, that- that's what I'd like to see. I mean, we've got standards in place. I just wanna, whether they're in charge of them or not, we need to make sure that they're meeting the standards. If you guys can have those conversations, that's what I'd like to see.
Are you saying that, and I'm- I'll get- I- I do see your light, so are you saying then that they're gonna- you've got a new MOU that you're gonna bring back to us?
I think the goal was to hold and see what the will of the board was, um, and then sit down and have a conversation with the City of Columbia before proceeding forward and being locked into it. And just making sure that everything that we wanted to see in there as it pertains to the young people and the quality of the facilities at EA Cox was- was met up to our- our satisfaction.
Okay, Mr. Sam?
Um, are the- are the fields, so in my- my view, it says normal city standards. Ridley- Ridley Field has six small softball fields, four large, and then whatever football fields. Are our fields being maintained to that level? So that, to me, that would be the level that they should maintain them to.
Not- not all city fields are created equally. So, um, th- there is a different level of attention given towards facilities across the county. So you go to look at Fairview Park, or, um, we've had challenges there. Um, when you look at Eva Gilbert, or you look at any other city facility, uh, they don't put the same level of attention that they do at Ridley Park and those other facilities. And so that's where you see a lot of these challenges. And some of it could be manpower, it just could be what they feel like is their minimum standard. I'm not quite sure.
Any other discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
So, I- I will take a different viewpoint. Um, when the sales tax referendum came, there was a lot of money available for the City of Columbia to do something with. They said they were gonna give some to the schools. We- we never saw that. Um, so if it was a funding issue, they've got a funding stream that could take care of those fields, and they've chosen not to. Uh, I believe they- I believe the only thing that they've done is they did put up lights. Now, that's a substantial cost, I understand that. But when you put how much sales tax revenue was generated from that referendum against a couple of hundred thousand dollars, that's just throwing pennies at- at something. Personally, I don't- I don't agree with them having our fields and maintaining our fields. I think they're our fields. The City of Columbia does not need those fields in their- in their repertoire of- of places to play stuff. They have plenty of land all over the county, all over the city, where they have developed places for children to play. I believe that if they can't meet our standard, because we do have a standard that we have set across our entire school district, they do not have a standard. Their standard is whatever they feel like funding that day. So if they can't meet our standard in a timely fashion, then I would request that they give us those athletic fields, and then there's a little bit of area to the side, because we're gonna need room for extra section stand, for a bathroom, and right there at those fields, there may not be enough room there. I'm not asking for the entire, I believe it was fifteen acres or something, or five a- it was... Not asking for that, but if- if it's- if they can't maintain it to our standards, I don't know why we don't have control over that, because we do have standards, and we do fully intend all of our facilities to be to that standard. Um, I'm a little bitter that there's- there's some sales tax revenue that was promised to us, and it's never materialized. And I don't think they have any intentions of that materializing to paper schools, uh, let alone athletic facilities at- at- at a school. Uh, I think it's sad that that school has been there for twenty or twenty-five years, and the athletic facilities are in the state in which they're in. I think that's shame on us for allowing this whole situation to come about. If they wanted the land that they got, we should've given them that land. Have you seen the fire hall they built on that land? Absolutely beautiful. And then you go through the woods and you see the athletic facility that they have maintained, not beautiful, not fair. So personally, I'm not interested in an MOU with them. I'm interested in getting that land back to us. Um, that way we can have complete control over it, and if there's a problem or an issue with our students playing on that field, the onus is on us to fix that problem, not going through a bureaucracy of a partner, partner. Um, I just don't see us- I don't- I don't see this being a fruitful endeavor. Who knows? Maybe they'll step up and say, hey, we're gonna invest three million dollars into this facility. Uh, that's a pipe dream, though.
Ms. Parker?
I- I just wanna point out to the board, though, before we get too far down this road, um, we do rely upon the city for a lot of other things for our schools, particularly at Whitthorne, where they don't have facilities. And they use, um, they use Fairview Park, I know, for, um, for baseball, and I think they use Ridley for softball some, um, because they don't have... And we have not provided them facilities on site. Um, so we might wanna be a little careful about biting the hand that feeds us when that's the only facilities that we have to offer unless we want to come up with a different solution, which I'm all about. Um, but, you know, we also don't have tennis courts at Central, and so the tennis team uses Woodland Park to play their tennis matches. So the city actually does, um, you know, allow us to use some of their facilities. And quite frankly, I'll just say, as a city taxpayer, we're a county school system, and I don't really feel like as a city taxpayer, it's their responsibility to make sure that our county schools have athletic facilities. That's our responsibility and the county's responsibility. So I think in some ways, we've shirked our responsibility. They may have shirked some of their responsibility, and- and they may have some way to- to rectify that, and hopefully, we could work on that. But I just think we, before we bite that hand that feeds us a little bit, we just may wanna be conscious of- of all the things that they do provide to us as well.
I think we'll just wait to see what the MOU...
Yes, uh, just to let you know, uh, as you- as you received an email today about Mr. Wooliver, he's on an anniversary trip, but he's texting me. Um, so the role of Jake will be played by Lisa tonight, and, um, basically, he is- he's saying, you know, it's doubtful that they'll agree to give it back. Um, you know, it would be best if the board would make a formal request that they fix the fields first, which we could, of course, sit down with them through the MOU process.
Okay, all right, good. Anyone else? Any other comments?
Betty?
Yes, I'm sorry.
On that packet, it does show on a map that there was forty point seven acres given to them, and you look at kind of a dollar value of what that would be today versus a couple hundred thousand dollars for lights. It's- it's a little bit offset. Just- just as a thought.
Mr. Moore?
There were also some other things in there. Did they meet all the other requirements that were on there? The trails?
There is a bike trail that they have built in there, and they may have some things that are in the wooded area that you can't see from the road visibly. Was there some uncertainty about that? But there is a walking trail. They did not build a, it's like another type of building, uh, science center type building or facility or something like that they were supposed to put in there. I don't think that happened either, but as far as the walking trail is concerned, that was done. And then the lights, of course, was put up as well, and then the fire hall that they did build.
Some- I guess to sum it up, where- where I would like to see is just, A, make sure that they have met the terms of the MOU to date, and then B, take our standards as far as fields and see if either they can or can't or aren't able to meet the- the standards we have, and then I guess just bring it back to us at that point, with what I would like to see.
Gotcha.
Mr. Howe?
So yes, I- I'm familiar with the area. They- they have put a- put a nice little trail through it there. They've also taken the, uh, mobile home that was on Nashville Highway, the temporary fire hall station, and they have drug it out there. It is where they're planning on putting bathrooms in. So, eh, no, I don't think they're meeting our standard. I don't think they are meeting their standard. I think they're just trying to get by. I mean, i- if it's a tax burden, I mean, it's a liability to them to have... We- this is our business. We maintain athletic fields, that's what we should be doing. So absolutely, you know, look at Whitthorne or wherever else that we're not providing, we should be providing for them as well. Um, I- I think that's just... That's just where I'm at.
Thank you. So we'll- we'll just wait and see what... Okay, thank you so much. Um, then moving on, we've got, um, some contract renewals. Am I lost my place? Right? Yes. Contract and renewals. Mr. Hall, is that you? School nutrition, it was Brian Parker's, but the twenty, or is that just general? There's the, um, the Board of Approval Letter is attached for several contracts that you want us to approve.
Sorry, these are all just renewals, just as kind of an FYI for you all. They're continuations of what we already have.
We don't have to vote on it, it's just an FYI. Okay, any questions or anything about that? Huh? I would- yeah, I would think we'd have to vote on them. Okay, once again, any questions, or do we put it on consent? All right, then, okay, Ms. Parker, you're ready with yours, okay? Thank you.
School nutrition- nu- school nutrition's the same, pretty much. It's just showing those- the options for us to use our current bid for next year for our food. Um, and I- as I will say, it's probably- it's- it's in our best interest to maintain those bids currently with the current environment that's going on, so...
All right, next is the, uh, Tennessee SRO Conference Hotel Cost, something we do every year. Um, do you want to say anything about that?
It was- it's something that they've done every year, and they put it on there because it was over twenty-five thousand, so it needed board approval.
Okay. Any discussion? Hmm, no. Do we put it on consent? Oh, my goodness, this is a way to go through this, isn't it? I don't see any policies for final adoption, or do you have something, Mr. R, on policy?
They're not under the- the fi- sorry, final adoption, but there is a vacation policy update.
Oh, that's right.
It was put on the March work session originally and asked to be replaced on the April work session, and in between that time, no one contacted me nor Ms. Ventura about any update. So it is, there- the only, eh, thing that I changed was the- the dates inside the policy, because there were some dates that would've needed to have been changed if this did get approved, so...
We've never really discussed it, though.
Correct.
Okay, so... I... Did Mr. Lindsay ask to have this?
Yes, so I attached the memo at the very beginning, and it kinda highlights the what's different in the policies. So the biggest change, um, in one of the requests was the difference, how the support staff and administration earn vacation days. So this would put all personnel earning vacation days at the same rate. Um, right now, support staff earn one a month in perpetuity, like they don't ever... It's just always one a month. Your administration staff, um, it goes up with years of service. Um, so this would change that to put everybody as years of service with Murray County, which has been updated, um, in that, that they could earn potentially more vacation days as they go forward. Um, there is some language in there to grandfather people who are already earning vacation time in. Um, for the admin staff, um, currently- Um, for the admin staff, um, currently administration, when they come in, earn vacation based on their years of administration service, period. This would limit vacation earning, um, or put them on a scale to earn vacation as years with Murray County Public Schools. So if you're an administrator and you're coming in, you'd earn one day a month for the first five, I think it's five years. And then you would earn one point five, and then as it goes up. Currently, if you have, if you came into Murray County with, um, fifteen years of administration service, then you'd be placed on that scale already. So you could potentially be earning two days of vacation as you come in. So this would place all staff that earn vacation time on the same scale. And then also, it does build in accruals. Currently, there's no cap on accrual for admin, for the support staff, that's, there's been a little confusion on that. But, um, this builds in based on your years, on how you're earning, what that accrual would be. And then you would, and it's grandfathered into where the accrual wouldn't start until next July. So you can give people time to use that time if they're currently over that days. But what it would do as well is that the, anytime earned over from the vacation at, at the end of the year, the June thirtieth would roll into their sick leave if they're over that on their vacation. Um, so that kinda goes over the vacation part of it. Um, and then it did update the holidays. It just kinda lists them what they actually are. Um, and then, which would give some of the ten-month staff a few more holidays than what they actually earn now. And then it does include what's called system-wide days, um, where the system is closed. And that would be an additional five days that's not already a part of the board-approved calendars. Um, in looking at these, I looked at vacation policies from, I, I took what our salary study had done and looked at most of, a lot of those counties that surround us. So I looked at Bedford, Dixon, Dixon, Franklin Special, Marshall, Davidson, Rutherford, Williamson, and Wilson. And kinda compared all their vacation policies, sick leave policies, and kinda came up with this. Um, to kinda put us where we're more in line with other districts. Um, some of what we do is better than some. Some of what we do is, is not as good. Um, but it kinda puts it all in there. So that's-
Is there any extra cost involved in changing some of this?
Well-
Well, let, let, I'll let Ms. Ventura speak just for a minute then, and you think about that.
My request would be that, that, and I hate to kick a can down the road, um, because we've often been criticized for doing that. However, um, my request would be that we put this on the next work session, uh, for multiple reasons. Um, one, Doug, uh, has a, a few concerns about it. Um, you know, he is implementing new software. We have just finished putting everyone on the salary study with a very specific number of days worked. Um, however, there are errors and there are things that have to be fixed within this policy, um, that Mr. Ard can talk more about, um, that we are currently not following. Um, so there are errors that need to be fixed. However, I think a greater discussion has to be had. Um, you know, Doug had called me earlier and basically said he does not know if there's a financial impact to this. I can't imagine that there is, um, but he does question whether it needs to go to the Financial Management Board. Um, a- and his concern is he has just entered everything into software in the implementation of the salary study as well as the new software. Um, I, I do have a couple of principals who are very concerned about this. They're, they're uncertain if the rolling of the vacation days into sick, even though that does count towards their retirement, is really a benefit to them. Um, so it's, we've just started really talking about this. Um, we did have a principals' meeting where we talked about this at length. And then, um, you know, today, when they saw the board agenda, um, suddenly more interest was, was generated. Um, so my request would be that we move it to the next work session. Um, I'm, I'm not opposed to, I'm not vehemently opposed to anything that this policy says. Um, I do question whether we do want to close central office five additional days throughout the year. Um, and like I said, we've literally just finished a salary study that says how many days everybody works.
If we're gonna kick it down, I, I don't mind holding my thoughts. But I will say that the system-wide closure is the one thing that I'm a little, um, wary of, just because, um, I feel like we, uh, I don't know that we're at that point yet where we're getting everything done that we need to, um, just to be completely honest. So I, I really think we need to think about that. Cause I imagine people are still accruing days in those months that we're then adding additional days that they're then off. So I don't see how there can be a financial impact if we have people that are working less and we're still giving them days off, uh, you know, keeping our regular days off.
Ms. Moore.
I mean, I, however, I would like to kick it down the road too, but we can still talk about some of it tonight. Um, might as well, we're here. Uh, I do have a question. So I, again, I'm a simple-minded person. I'm gonna pull a comment from Wayne when he always says that. Um, can someone explain how there is a, and that's not a dig at Wayne here, I just love the way he says that. Um, so there's a, on, on three and four. So how is there a maximum accrual for vacation days, but then you can roll them over? It seems like that's not really a maximum, if you can just roll them over to sick days. And, or am I not understanding how you guys do that?
Well, it's a maximum for the vacation. Like then they, anything over that then rolls into the sick leave.
Well, then it's drilling out a maximum, is it?
Well, they're paid out differently at the end, so your financial impact is different. And how people can use them is different. So you can use a vacation day for anything. You can only use a sick day for qualified sick leave.
Now, what hap- and again, I, this is my ignorance-
Vacation is also paid out at a person's actual rate. Your sick leave is paid out at fifty dollars a day currently for licensed staff and ten dollars a day for your classified staff.
So it seems that that would then have a financial impact. Would have to, if we would convert those over.
It could, yes. And that, well, the sick leave is only paid out at retirement. Vacation is paid out when you leave, period. So if you left today, but you're not retiring, you get paid your vacation out. If you left today and are not retiring, your sick leave is just, if you're a licensed staff, you can transfer it to another district. If you're classified, it's just gone. So depending on when somebody leaves, and currently, um, your administrators get paid out sixty days. This would cap them out at forty days. And it would also change how they're earning it, anyone coming into the district, like I said. So like you're a principal who's coming in now, if they've had fifteen years of experience, they're gonna earn two days a month. But with this change, they would only earn the one day, unless with time served in Murray County Public Schools. So that would limit what somebody can earn coming in. So it's time, it's giving credit to people with their time served with the district.
Just one more question too. What prompted this to come up?
Mr. Lindsay.
Okay. I just wondered. Thank you.
There, he's not here too. That, that would be another reason I'd wanna put it. So we'll, we'll put it off to the next work session and, and give everybody an opportunity. Your light is still on. Did you have anything else to say?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, like Ms. Ventura was saying, there are two things that, when, when all of this originally happened and originally got talked about, it was like last March. That was month two that I was here on the job. This was getting pulled out of our handbook and put into policy. So there are two things that kinda needed to be updated. Whether or not this gets approved, we will have to approve something before the end of the, the year. And, and Doug's also well aware of that. He's asked for those changes. One is currently it states that people earn vacation days for every twenty days worked, which is not actually how people earn them. They earn one a month, which makes a difference on your twelve-month employees, cause then technically they should be earning thirteen for the year instead of twelve, because they work two hundred and sixty days. Um, and then there is a cap on the, um, on the accrual for the support staff at thirty, which the request is to make it unlimited, but the payout would be thirty. So as long as you're still working here, you can continue to earn it. But when you, whenever you go to leave, you'd only get the thirty days.
Thank you. I, I received a text from Mr. Fulbright. Mr. Howe, I, I think it was in response to your, uh, discussion or when you, your discussion about this extra sales tax. That, that was not prom- that was, th- they did not u- utilize that or use that for school tax. It wasn't promised as well, just- He's watching.
Ms. Kenshaw? Well, if I could just say, um, I mean, I'm in no hurry to do all the other changes, but if there's something we need to change because it's just not lining up, can you just bring us that to the next meeting and we could just approve the necessary changes for now? I just don't wanna be in a rush-
Sure.
To go through the rest of this. If we can just address that part, if you could bring us the language that just aligns what we're currently doing anyway with what the policy says. I think this board could probably move pretty quickly on that, and then we have plenty of time to address the, the deeper questions.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is tenure. You've, the list is there. It's, it's our, uh, by law, we have to approve that. Those are by recommendation of the principals. So we'll simply vote on it as, and it would be new business. I don't think that we would want to do that as consent, do you think? Hmm? No, never. Okay, so that would be under new business. And then the next one is the superintendent's search update. And, um, I know you see, have seen the attachment. You know how the numbers fell. And, um, I have discussed with Ms. Gerard and, and Ms. Ventura that they, that we made it clear to them that their responsibility ended at this point, that we would do the rest from this point on. So the thing you all have, we've got to decide, number one, how many you want to, um, where would you stop as to who you want to have a video from? Um, I have asked, and, and certainly if someone else would rather do this, but I, I have asked Mr. Hooper if he would be willing to take on contacting the candidates we choose to ask for videos and submitting to them, uh, the comments that we'd like to hear from them and receiving them and then sending them to us. The deadline for that is the twenty-seventh that we set, okay? Um, my first question to you, I have a couple of questions. I think we're gonna have to get back to him. Was how many of those looking at the numbers do you want to have, uh, where do you wanna stop? Mr., Ms. Parker?
Um, I actually, I, I, I think it seems like there's a clear four. And I actually would propose that instead of going the video route, that we just do face-to-face interviews and potentially consider doing a second interview, uh, just to move this along.
Uh, I don't have a problem with that, but others, I, I wanna hear what everybody has to say here. Who was next? Mr. Moore, will you? Okay, Mr. Howe.
Um, I don't have a preference to it. Uh, however, uh, Ms. Irvin knew she probably wasn't gonna be able to tonight. And she wanted to reiterate that she would like to see the top seven video interviews. Um, if, if we're going that route with video, she'd like to see the top seven, uh, that gets, cause there's six fives and fours, and she'd like to see all the fours. So.
She just text me, uh, thank you, Martha. The more the better is what she said. Um, okay, Ms. Moore.
Um, I mean, I, I could do this either way. If, if we're going to go the video route, I too would like to see the top seven. But if we're gonna go straight to interviews, I could see why there's a logic behind just doing the top four. I, I don't know. I, I'm really struggling with it, to be honest. I mean, I think it's, I think there's a kind of a pretty clear groupings there. Um, I don't know.
I, I would say we did set forth our parameters, and this is what we were gonna do. I would say that if we change the rules in the middle of the game, that's not really fair. Um, we said we were going to collect these. We were gonna do video interviews, and then we were gonna do interviews. I, I personally think that that's just the process we should probably follow, since that's what we set forth. Um, that's just my opinion.
We didn't set it forth to the candidates. We just set it among ourselves, so they don't-
Which is public.
They have no idea what we would be asking.
It's public. They, I'm sure they watch videos.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I think we had talked about doing the top five. And I don't think that we have a clear top five. I think we have a clear top four. And again, for four, for four people, I am more than willing to come in here and, and interview face-to-face because I think one of the things that we've had a problem with in the past is only doing one face-to-face interview. I think that there's a lot of follow-up that needs to happen at second interviews and potentially even third interviews. And I think the quicker we get this process going face-to-face, the quicker we can get a real feel as to whether or not any one of these candidates would be a good fit for our system going forward.
Mr. Sam?
So just my opinion, I don't see, there's a top one, and then two through seven, we have one point that separates those. And so I think we get a number, so there's six that just one point separates. And so I feel like, and I, and I think we did, or I'm not positive, if we actually voted on the timeline and how we were gonna conduct the process. And so I think videos were due April twenty-seventh, um, and that was actually in our, in, in the vote. So unless we want to go back on that, um, I think we need to do videos. And I, I would be in favor of the top seven as well.
Ms., Ms. Irwin? Wait a minute, I can't get this on. Let me, let me see. She says, "People can look great on paper, but may not interview well. It's too important of a role to not allow us to see a video presentation, in my opinion." Um, and I agree with all of you, but let me say this. To me, the video is a little bit of busy work. I would do better if I could see them in person, be able to interact with them in person. And you all know that even though I, you know, I have kinda looked back at the whole process we went through before, but we had a lot of one-on-one time with them before. So we, even though we didn't do two interviews, we had time to get to know them one-on, you know, in person. I don't know that a video would do that, but I'm, don't really object to doing it. I just don't know how effective it will be in helping us. And, and I think it'll just, may just reach us to the same conclusion that we have, in that there are really four top candidates. So, but the will of the board is what needs to be here. So Ms., I see one light. Mr. Moore.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll put it back on. This, this is where it gets difficult, cause I mean, just because I know we're trying to keep the process moving. I appreciate that, Chris, and that, I mean, you have a good point that it's, um, if we were to change direction and just go straight to the four interviews, um, I guess we would need to come up with a process for, you know, a timeline for that. I know in, in the past, we've done some additional work where we had some people go around, visit schools and do some other things. I don't know if we wanna do something similar, uh, or just go straight into the interviews and just see how the, the first four looks. I mean, Ms. Parker's point to that is, um, I mean, there's always the option. If we go through those four and they're just flop horribly, we can always, uh, reshuffle the deck if we have to. Um, I, I'm not opposed to either one of these. Uh, I'm trying to keep an open mind of, of what we're about to do. So I could, I could handle either one of these. If we wanted to go straight to the interviews and just have those as four separate times.
I think, um, as much as I would like to see it just go straight to the interviews, I, I do think probably if we voted on this, and this is where we said we were gonna do it, that that's what we need to do. And to be, uh, to do the seven, I mean, you're right. There's not, but two points off the ones that got a four is, you know, uh, so I would think then the next question would be that I would like for you guys, each of us, to submit questions. I don't mean specific questions. And I, I've talked to Mr. Hooper about it. I talked to Ms. Gerard and, and Ms. Ventura. So it'd be almost like questions like, tell me about yourself. Why would you like to come to Murray County? What's your educational philosophy? That's, I'm, and I'm not saying that's what it needs to be, but it needs to be general sort of things so that they speak. And, and the video, I think, should not be longer than ten minutes, uh, for, for the reason that downloading it and all that might be an issue as well. So what my suggestion, and I'm open to anything right here, uh, as well, cause I honestly had not given it to any thought until I got here tonight, and here I am, um. So I, my, my thinking is that we need to come up with a consensus of those questions so that Mr. Hooper can submit them to the candidates when he, uh, reaches out to them for a video. And I, you can do that. We could do that by email and let him look and see what would be appropriate. Um, once again, I don't think you'd want anything so specific, because I think that we would do that in, um, the in-person interview- in, um, the in-person interviews. So, I don't see any lights, so what does that mean here? Not like us. Mr. Moore?
Haven't he turned the light on yet? Um, I'm fine with that. Uh, what, what was the, the hard deadline we have to have these back?
Which means he would probably need to, to get in touch with the candidates tomorrow.
Okay, so we would, I mean, I just wanna fundamentally make sure that we all understand that if we're gonna be submitting some questions, we need to submit those quickly.
That, it needs to be submitted tonight or in the morning, or after here, you know, uh...
And, and Mr. Hooper, you feel like you can have some, a, a short list of questions? Um, and again, and I wanna say, too, it doesn't have to be a ten-minute-long video, I mean, I just, I just need them to fully answer the, the questions.
It could be shorter, no longer than that, right?
Yeah, no longer than that. Um, and we feel like we can have some, some questions of them in time to get those back. If, if we are gonna do the questions, though, I'm still backed, I just wanna make sure, I don't know where everybody else is, I still would like to see the top seven if we're gonna do the videos. Uh, that's where I would be.
I think that's what, I think that's what we are, pretty much consensus to do, but if that's what we voted to do, then, you know, I, I, I think that's what we should do.
Okay, and then, uh, and then we can come up with a, a, how they need to be submitted back, and then we can disseminate them amongst us on the twenty-seventh.
On the twenty-seventh, then you, he's gonna send them to us.
Okay.
We hope.
All right.
And then we will, uh, I don't remember what the next date was.
May second.
May, then we would have... As soon as we watch them up until May second, then we would rank them. And I would strongly suggest, rather than just giving everybody a one vote, this is, once again, this is just a suggestion, I would rate them one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
So, a, a number one gets seven ta- seven points?
Or, oh, well, maybe not, maybe two, top three.
I would do them through numerical order, the top one is your one. Just do it, I think that's easier, probably, to...
But he would get seven points. Yeah. High score wins, right?
No, well, if, if we go...
Isn't it great how the sausage is made?
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Hooper, when we get the videos back, uh, we could just, if, if you don't mind doing this as well, whichever methodology we're using, can you put that into the, the communication back to us uh, so that everyone understands whichever one we're doing? 'Cause it really doesn't matter which one we do, we can do the math either way, just we need to pick one and stick with it.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just pick one when I send it out, so that way we're all doing the same thing, something easy.
It should be ones, it's like, you, it's ten ones, or whatever, you know, Ms. Parker?
I just wanted to, we didn't do a video process on the last one that we did, but we did do it when we did the previous search, and at that time, we actually all came here and watched them all together and then tabulated them. And I only say that just because, um, I mean, not, not to tell on our board, but sometimes we're not so good at, like, getting things in promptly, and so I think maybe, I mean, we all have done that before, so it's not, not anything, uh, we're not picking on anybody. But I think if we're all, if we all have to be here, there's not, like, issues with the video, there's not, like, I couldn't pull up this person, like, to me, it's more fair if we just all watch it together, and, you know...
You will be here all together on the twenty-eighth.
Oh, that would really be perfect.
Because that's a call special, we could just stay and watch the videos, I think that'd be a good idea. Okay?
And then make plans for the next one?
Can we make that happen?
Uh, I'm happy with that.
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
Do we need to send a, what type of format they need to send the videos back in?
Okay. But we would, we're, but we would, it would not be a meeting, so we would just be viewing them. What did you say? It'd be on the screen, huh? Oh, my gosh, there they are, okay. Um...
I mean, it, it, I mean, if we're, we're all together, it's an open work show, I mean, anybody could come and watch the videos at that time.
It would be a work session, like, mm-hmm.
If we want to act on it, we've gotta have it on our specially-called agenda, otherwise we can't do anything.
Well, we're, we've already got one, we can...
I mean, we won't be voting on who we're gonna hire that night, so, I mean, I wouldn't think we, we need to vote, I mean, we may just informally decide who moves forward, which is kinda what we're doing now, so...
The, what you did already vote on said May second, so there were, you were gonna get, the videos were due on the twenty-seventh, and then on the May second board meeting, or I guess, should be May third, I think that's the actual day.
So, we would literally view them, go home, think about it, sewed on, and send them in.
And on May, yeah, at, at, at the May, yes, at the May board meeting, that's when I think it was suggested that you guys pick your final to actually have the in-person. I mean, you could...
What, what, what is the comment here?
We would start the work session for the viewing, just wouldn't have the, the tally until that.
It would not be part of the special call meeting, it'll be a work session after the special call, and then we would do our voting and all, and thanking prior to the second. Okay, are we clear? Okay, so... Huh? Lots of praying, that's right, I'm sorry. Uh, is there anything else here?
It's not on here, but I do wanna note that, uh, we're gonna be recognizing the retirees at five P.M. uh, before the board meeting in May. Um, so, May third at five P.M., we're gonna recognize all of our retirees. And then on May third, that's also when the, um, the tenure will be recognized, which you guys vote on that during the actual board meeting.
Okay, uh, Mr. Fulbright here just texts a, a, a good question. Will the viewing in the work session be open to the public? I, I would prefer to label it a retreat, let's, let's do it as a retreat.
I... Yeah.
They're open, anybody can come.
I don't know why we wouldn't. I don't know why we wouldn't have it open, I mean, this, you know...
It would be open, we're talking about whether it would be broadcast.
I don't know why it wouldn't. I can't think of a legitimate reason why we wouldn't broadcast this the same as any other work session or meeting. I mean, so in essence, we could broadcast those videos...
We're not gonna broadcast the videos, we would just be sitting here watching them.
Yeah, they, we can, they can, the camera can point to...
Yeah, yeah, true.
I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't. I mean, 'cause we're gonna hear from our constituents about who of these candidates they like and don't like. I don't know why we wouldn't have, them have the same access to the information that we're looking at.
Okay. Yes, it is, will, will, but you're open, Mr. Fulbright. Anything else? Whew. All right, then I'm going to, uh, adjourn the work session, I think, all right? Have a good evening.